All right, good evening, everyone. Just to begin the night, we have to host, hold our organizational meeting for 2019. We will be nominating and electing our chairman and vice chairman for the year. The meeting is open at 7:05 PM. The first order of business is to have a call for nomination for chairman for the year. Do we have any nominations? Commissioner Solhavy?
Yes, I'd like to place the name of Rich Fredette in nomination to be chairman of the zoning commission.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
I move nominations be closed.
Nominations are closed. Congratulations, Chairman.
I think we should vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I heard a vote.
That's a formality. Aye.
All in opposition? Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. I'll let the chairman continue the vice chair election.
Okay. Thank you very much for your support, everyone. The next order of business would be the election of the vice chair of the commission for the year 2019. Mr. Henrich.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Chris Solhavy as vice chair.
A motion by Mr. Solhavy, seconded by Mr. Baccola. Any other nominations for vice chair? Seeing none, motions are closed. And all those in favor of Mr. Solhavy as vice chair say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Thank you very much. And a motion to close the organizational meeting for July, Jan- January, not July, January 9th, 2019. Motion by Mr. Solhavy, seconded by Mr. Baccola. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Now on to the special meeting of the Stratford Zoning Commission. Stratford Zoning Commission is now open for public hearing for those petitions advertised to be heard at this session. Chairman, to be noted that the record that, okay, we're all full members are here, I wish to announce that, that should any items or tonight's agenda, on tonight's agenda, take more time than anticipated, this public hearing may conclude at 11:00 PM. And the continued, and be continued to another date, which will be established at that time. Any items not heard by 11:00 PM tonight will be heard at the continued public hearing. For the record, petitions to be heard this evening were advertised in the Connecticut Post on December 20th, 2018, and December 26th, 2018. Properties were duly posted on January 2nd, 2019. Ms. Phillips, if you could read the first petition, please. Actually, we could probably take all three of them together.
The first one reads as a text amendment. It's revised petition of 608 Ferry Boulevard Associates LLC seeking to amend the zoning regulations by creating a new 29 titled, quote, "Adaptive Reuse Housing Zone." Number two, 608 Ferry Boulevard, the revised petition of 608 Ferry Boulevard Associates LLC seeking to change the zone from a CA zone to the proposed adaptive reuse housing zone. And last, third, 608 Ferry Boulevard revised petition of 608 Ferry Boulevard Associates LLC seeking a site plan review approval under the proposed 29 of the zoning regulations to convert an existing commercial space to a 20-unit affordable housing development pursuant to 830G of the Connecticut General Assembly statutes on a property located in a CA zone.
Is the petitioner present?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, commissioners. Happy New Year. Attorney Tim Hollister representing the applicant. With me is my co-counsel attorney, Robert Rosati, professional engineer Jim Swift, architect Bob Tobin, and the owner-applicant Biagio Barone, principal of 608 Ferry Boulevard LLC. Let me, since we've been at this now a couple of sessions, let me just briefly recap where we are. The commissioner should have our package, which bears the date of December 3rd, and then accompanying that is the revised site plan and the revised architectural plan, both of which are revised to November of 2018. So, this application, as you recall, was filed originally in July of last year under state statute 8-30G. We filed a text amendment, a rezoning, a site plan combined with coastal site plan, and in November 2018, the text amendment and the rezoning were denied, and the commission approved the site plan and coastal, but the 24-unit plan was reduced to 16 units and several conditions were imposed, and I'll come back to how we have dealt with that. But on a procedural matter, I want to make sure the commission and also the public understands two important things. Under 830G, there is this unique procedure called the resubmission procedure, which allows an applicant, after you, the commission has made its initial decision on an application, instead of going to court, we can try to keep working on your concerns or your denial reasons, try to reach a, an acceptable compromise. So what's before you tonight is this so-called resubmission. Now, what that means is, first of all, that tonight's hearing, and this is important for everyone to understand, including members of the public, tonight's hearing is by statute a continuation of the hearings that were held in August and October and November. So, no one needs to repeat what was said in, at those earlier hearings. We do not intend to do so. I think the public just needs to understand, they don't have to treat this like this is the first time the commission has, has heard the application. The other procedural part of this, which I think you're aware, is the statute says that the resubmission has to be dealt with completely within 65 days from the receipt. That was December 12th, so my calculation is you have until February 15th, so at very least we have tonight. And by the way, we do appreciate your scheduling this as a special meeting, and I guess you would also have your January 23rd date available if we're not able to wrap this up tonight. But so, those are the procedures. Now, in terms of the application itself, the original application was 24 units with eight affordable. We had the public hearing on August 29th, and we had the usual explanation of the plans. There were public comments, questions from the commission and staff. Then in October of 2018, we came back to you with a revised plan in which we had eliminated all of the two-bedroom units, so it was 24 one-bedroom units. We had made a variety of architectural improvements. We had revised the parking ratio. You recall that was a fairly significant part of the discussion. We had increased the parking ratio to meet the town standards, both for the one-bedroom units and the 10% for visitor parking. And then we had revised the proposed text amendment and the, and the affordability plan to match those changes. Then we came back, the commission acted on this in, in November, denied the text amendment and the rezoning stating that they were not consistent with the plan of conservation and development, and they constituted spot zoning. And then the approved, commission approved the site plan, but reducing it to, from 24 to 16 one-bedroom units and imposing several conditions. So, that brings us to this resubmission, what's before you tonight, and I want to stress most prominently and right off the bat, this is the applicant's effort to compromise. We have now, we now have before you a site plan that has, we've knocked off four units, 20% of the, of the proposed residential units, a very significant change, 21 bedroom units, that would mean six affordable units. And I need to stress, on top of that, that we have 2,500 square feet of commercial and office space, which was a request that was made along the way. We have maintained the 40 parking spaces, and we have accepted all of the conditions, all of the conditions that you imposed last time. So, I hope, I hope you're taking this as the applicant's effort to bend over backwards to try to meet the commission's concerns. And with regard to the 20 units, I need to emphasize, at this size of a project, this is not a massive project. A big, the big project would be 150 units. This is a very small project. Every single unit counts in terms of the applicant's ability to provide the quality materials, the architectural improvements, the parking spaces, the compliance with the conditions. We cannot go below 20 units. We are at the absolute minimum, given the program that we, the quality program that we want to, to bring to the town. So, what I'd like to do is have Mr. Swift and Mr. Tobin just walk you through how we've actually implemented these 21-bedroom units in the commercial space in terms of the site plan and the floor plan.
My name is Jim Swift. I'm a licensed professional engineer and licensed landscape architect. So, so as was stated, what I'm going to do is I'm going to highlight primarily the changes that were made, and I may digress a little bit to, to refresh the commission's memory on a few things, but generally just the changes. So you can see the Ferry Boulevard in this location of the site, Riverview Place towards the bottom. The changes in sort of an order would be that we're going to leave in place all the Riverview parking spaces that are there now. The commission will remember on the base survey, there's really actually a pavement line that goes from this frontage on Riverview Place pretty much all the way across the entire site. That's, that's what exists at the site right now. And what we're doing is we're, we're saving some of the spaces that exist now along this section, and then we're kind of breaking it up a little. We're adding some green spaces to buffer our parking lot from Riverview Place, but in effect, we're, we're still using a lot of that area for parking, but we're trying to add in green spaces where we can. But the main point is that where we have existing parking spaces in this location, we're going to add, leave those spaces in place. So that's one thing. Second thing is, and it's a little hard to see from this, this drawing, but the basic curb line for Riverview Place is, is out at this lower line that you see where the green extends to, and I use a yellow line to outline the site, and I probably shouldn't have used it in this case, because it's not fairly indicating that in this location, there is, the pavement extends all the way to that line where that sidewalk and that planting island is. And what that is, is that's a, a pull-off spot for delivery trucks, FedEx trucks, things of that nature. So from this dimension, from this location, all the way back through this driveway entrance is now a truck pull-off where he can pull off of, of Riverview Place and get out of the way, and I think that was a concern of the commission. Another thing that we did is, the commission was concerned about our trash area and how trucks were able to maneuver, and what we did was we took it from, from the back of the site, and we moved it up towards the front of the site and expanded out the throat of this particular driveway. And what can happen then is, is a truck, a service truck, trash truck can actually come and come back into the site, and he can make these maneuvers to pick up trash, roll out trash, and then pull out, so that, so that he's minimizing the activities that he has to perform out in the street. So again, moving the trash area from here back towards up the front and rearranging the parking somewhat, so that we can do that. And, and again, making that driveway width wider, which is, I think, something that some of the commissioners suggested. Some of the other issues had to do with, with a little bit more of a landscaping bent, and what we did on these plans is we added a, the six-foot vinyl fence that goes now the entire length of, of the property line, along that line. We had already done that on this line, that already existed, along with the arboretum, and then we continued that arboretum over here to the point where we have the room. Our building is very close to the property line, so we didn't continue it there. We only have a couple of feet to plant, so we didn't, we didn't do it in that location. And we made certain other landscape revisions, as you can see, for, that are necessary for some of the changes that we made, but we did maintain an effort to make sure that we could put street trees in that would enhance Riverview Place. We also kept some of the lower evergreen screen planting, that's a general part of the zoning regulations, so that we could hide cars, cars, bumpers, that sort of thing. So generate a little bit of a buffer, so that, that we weren't parking right up against the, the street line. But the main point of, and the final, I guess, main point of these changes is, and we are going to discuss, I was going to discuss the, the commercial that we're adding and the, and the reduction of some of the units, is that we, we still maintain those 40 parking spaces. In making all of these changes, and by gaining spaces where we have, we have not lost any parking spaces. Parking space number change, does not, even though we lost dwelling units, the parking has stayed the same. And a little minor details that I might not have mentioned, you know, we have, we changed the access here so that the trucks can, when they had access, they have walks that are very convenient, our office or retail that's located on this first floor has direct access up through these stairs. Delivery has direct access up these ramps, so we've taken that kind of design into consideration. And if, unless the commission has any questions, we'll look at the architecture.
Any questions? No? Ms. Phillips?
Very easy one. The delivery areas that you have designated, how do you prevent other cars from, from parking there? Is there going to be signage, some kind of penalty, permit, striping, something that keeps other people from saying, oh, this becomes too easy and we'll park there?
Sure. That's, that's a very, very, very good point. And what we should do is, is we should sign, in those locations, deliveries only, you know, I don't know, fines are statutorily available to us, but we would be glad to sign this area as, as deliveries only.
Stripe it? Do you stripe it as well?
We could stripe it. Yep, absolutely. Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
My name is Robert Tobin. I'm the architect for the project. The elimination of the four units allowed us, what we did was remove the four units out of the first floor, and basically we're looking at converting this into some sort of commercial and/or office space for doctors and what have you, that it would be a commercial type space that would be open during the day, closed in the evening, and sharing parking, some of the parking with the apartments. As we looked at the, as you look at the total number of parking spaces allocated for the apartments at 1.5 per unit plus 10%, we're over that number, and the, and we're seven parking spaces short of providing parking space for the commercial. So there's ten, seven leftover parking spaces for the commercial. So the shared usage would be able to utilize both, because we're looking at these businesses being closed on nights and weekends. So, basically, we're taking the whole first floor and converting that to commercial space. The, to further emphasize your, your pull-off area here, this is sized so it could be handled to UPS and FedEx truck. It's not a, a small space to be able to get two trucks in there at the same time. And the elevations, what we looked at doing, there had been some concern that the building was, the size of the building and some of the architectural features of the building, that we hadn't changed them enough. One of the things we looked at doing is expanding the, the top of the building, the coping at the top of the parapet, so it's 18 to 24 inches deep, which would be very similar in nature to the St. Vincent's Building up on Main Street. That's extended a little bit larger than ours, so it brings a more residential feature into the top of the building. And then what we were looking at doing is providing a freeze board that separated the floors, which would break up some of the masses of the building, and as in addition to that, trim out the windows with a separate trim that separated the windows, so it brings it more from a commercial-looking building, more to a residential operation with, you know, putting corner boards and out, corner elements on the building to soften the edges. So from an architectural standpoint, they're the changes that we're looking at also making. Any questions? That's the end of my.
The one question I have is, what assurance do we have that those commercial office spaces are going to be closed, you know, to allow for residents to use the parking spaces that they need to? I understand the concept that you're going with, and it sounds good on paper, but I'd, I'd like to know what assurance we're going to get.
That's something that the attorneys will have to address. That's not an architectural element for me.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all I got. Mr. Henrich?
How many apartment units do you have there?
20. Because I'm counting 15 on the second floor and eight on the third floor? Am I seeing that wrong?
I didn't bring, because I don't have the architectural plans, because it wasn't part of the changes. Hang on a second.
On, on what we have here, you have a mix of efficiency and one-bedroom apartments. They, they seem to start at 201 and go up to 215.
I've got, I've got 12 units on the second floor and eight units on the third floor.
Okay, it is 12, I'm sorry. Okay, it's just, yeah, it's the way it's numbered, so.
Pardon?
Okay, I understand, I see it now.
Okay. Yeah, it's split between the old building and the, the new building.
Okay. Any more questions for Mr. Tobin? Up. Ms. Phillips?
I just wanted to understand a little bit more, because I didn't understand the lighting. What's the outside lighting going to be like, particularly for safety, building entrance?
The underside of the parking deck and the underside of the front canopy all have existing downlights in them now, and we're basically going to be reusing the existing lighting in that area, and we felt that there was enough overthrow from the lower level to the parking lot, because once there's lighting underneath there, it will light up the, the few parking spaces we have to the south. And so we didn't anticipate adding any, because our building comes all the way over to this edge, these, this row of driveway and this row of parking would be adequately lit up from the outflow of lighting from underneath the building, so there's no specific lighting being added there. If we don't get the proper foot candles, what we would end up doing is possibly putting maybe one or two zero cutoff lights on the edge of the building, and that was the extent of our lighting that we were anticipating.
My concern is, okay, that's why I didn't see any. In my mindset, and I'll talk about that later, I'm a little concerned, I don't want heavy lighting that disrupts the neighborhood, but sometimes I see him in, in yellow, but something that gives a little bit more assurances to, say, some of the tenants who may feel uncomfortable that that's a little bit of a darker area, that it's shadowed.
You're talking about during the day?
No. At night. It's that back row.
Back here?
Yes. I was concerned that that may not have enough lighting.
If, if, there's a state minimum requirement for three, three to five foot candles over the entire parking lot, we have to meet that.
Foot candles are...
Foot candles is the...
That, those little ones that are down by...
Foot candles are a unit of measurement.
No, that's not what I'm thinking of, no.
Okay. For instance, in this room right now, I'm going to, off the top of my head, say we have 50 foot candles spread out across the floor. In a nighttime environment, if you go outside in the parking lot, that parking lot outside has three to five foot candles spread out across the parking lot, so that there's, you know, so you feel safely walking to your cars and what have you, and it's not overbearing to the neighborhood, which is why that any new lights that get added have to be put in as zero cutoff lights, so that the light doesn't transfer to the neighbor's property on either side. So if we had to add additional lighting, it would be that type of lighting that would be added, and be very minimal, enough so that we have proper lighting coverage out to the edge.
So, how do we know ahead of time whether or not there's enough lighting, or whether you need to add a little bit more?
I will be having our engineer do a foot candle calculation and determine the proper lighting for the parking lot.
Has that been done?
Has not been. And that's, again, that's a code requirement we have to meet in order to apply for a building permit. And we're not, we're not, we're sensitive to the lighting that needs because of the area we're in.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It would be no more lighting that exists over at the condo association, probably less, because of the, the codes nowadays are less lighting, not more lighting. And so the codes that we have to comply with are substantially less lighting than, than are provided over there.
Are there going to be cameras in that back parking lot? Does anyone know?
We're going to have a full security system in the building, so I would anticipate that there would be some sort of cameras, but there's no onsite person to monitor those cameras, but I, you know, there would probably potentially be video.
Well, I just want to make sure, I don't know of anybody, but is there going to be a DVR camera that does some kind of storage of...
There's going to be cameras DVR system dialed in to get into the front door as well, too. Camera at the front door.
Biagio, can you give your name for the...
Oh, Biagio Barone. Yep.
So, so in the back, in the back parking?
Yep.
It's not working. In the back row?
Mm-hmm.
Will the DVR cameras be able and clear enough to be able to get a good visual on that back row of the parking lot?
Oh, everything's going to be high definition, yeah. Cameras throughout the whole, inside and out of the building.
Okay.
Yeah, including the lobby, you know, that's all.
So that if you were a senior who was parking in the back row, you would feel safe? That's what I'm thinking of.
Oh, yeah, 20 of us can be, yeah, monitored with the camera system, and also security system to get in and out of the building as well.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions for Mr. Tobin? Okay, next.
I think that finishes up with Mr. Tobin and, and Mr. Swift, so let me try to summarize and conclude our remarks for tonight. Mr. Chairman, I believe you asked a question about shared parking between the commercial and the, and the residential space. Generally, you would do that in three ways. First, the lease would say that, you know, that as a condition of being in the commercial space, you can only use a designated space and only for designated hours, and we might even go further and say, if there's a residential use, you have to give way to that use. I mean, the people who live there, I think, should have priority, so we can do that. So a lease provision, designated spaces, and then sticker parking, so that the, the building management knows if there's somebody not properly parked there. So, you know, and that's fairly common, that's not a, that's not a big deal. And, and, you know, given the, you could also restrict the hours that the, the commercial vehicle could be on-site, and that would be a negotiated lease term of...
And that would be a negotiated lease term upfront, so I think that, I think that can be fairly well managed. Just so we're clear, we certainly would accept a condition along what was suggested by Commissioner Phillips's comment about adequate light in the back portion of the, of the property of the parking lot, and also signage and striping to make sure that there's no residential parking in the loading zone. I assume it's clear, but I'll mention it anyway, that in the December third package, T E B S two and three, we have, as, since we have now introduced a proposed commercial floor space into the floor plan, we have made that a permitted use. This is on page two of the final revision of the regulation. We've reduced the maximum density to twenty units, and we've introduced the parking ratio that is Mr. Swift explained. It leads you to the requirement of forty spaces. And then in the affordability plan, we simply changed the total number of units to twenty and the affordable units to six, and that is, that is on page eleven of Tap Three. Let me just make another pitch. I know the commission denied the text amendment and the rezoning, but let me, let me go back over sort of why we proposed that in the first and why we think it's important. It's good planning practice. This is a very small site, it's a customized use, if I can use that phrase in the sense that you're providing, you're combining the affordable units with the commercial space, you're trying to make sure it's enforceable, which is a benefit to all the neighbors who live further down the street. You heard their testimony, they are concerned about the impacts, we want to accommodate them. The text amendment actually facilitates that by making it clear to everybody, the owner, the neighbors, anybody who's going to live there, as to what is allowed and what isn't allowed, so it facilitates enforcement. It avoids this being classified as a non-conforming use, which will help down the road if, you know, if there's a financing that Mr. Barone needs to go through. And then I would assume that your, that the commission's concern was not setting a precedent. But again, this is such a, a small, small site, very low, low number of units, and a customized package. I respectfully submit you don't need to worry about setting a precedent for other properties by adopting the text amendment. I just think it's, it's good planning practice. And again, I've done almost a hundred of these over twenty-seven years, and I've had town officials tell me that they're glad that they went that way, and that's why we proposed it here. So with regard to the site plan, I guess the final comment is, the applicant team here has made five, five sets of revisions, trying to work with the commission. We increased the parking, we improved the architecturals, we accepted all the conditions from the November fifteenth action, we've reduced the density, and we've changed the bedroom count to eliminate the two bedrooms. I'm not sure whether there's much more we can do and still accommodate the residential program, so we hope you see it that way. So with that, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, again, thank you for hearing us at a special meeting. We would very much appreciate the opportunity to take this plan and put it into, put it into practice. Bob? Go ahead.
One, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hal, Mr. Solhavy? Has a question for Mr. Hallis before...
I'm just submitting mailings, I don't think it was a requirement when we did it anyways.
Okay, thank you. Okay. We did receive them.
Okay, actually, we're online here. Okay, I'm just trying to take, I'm looking at the regulation itself, and maybe it's, it's probably right in front of me, but I'm just not seeing it, the number of unit calculations. How many units you're allowed?
Bottom of page two.
Bottom of page two.
Twenty-nine-ish, twenty-nine point six.
Okay, the density shall be no more than twenty units. Okay, you're right, it was right in front of me. I was asking that in, more or less in conjunction with looking at section twenty-nine point five, where it says that no building or structure to be erected, altered, or occupied or used for development other than one of the following, one or more of, that's the key phrase, the following specified purposes, residential dwellings, first-floor commercial office space not to exceed twenty-five hundred feet. So, you know, I was curious if it's, the way it's written here, if you decided not to go forward with the commercial space. So let's just say, as a hypothetical, it didn't work out, your only option then would, you would still have to be held to twenty units.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Unless you came back to...
Unless you came back to...
No.
You'd have to go through a revision of the, of the regulation then at that point.
Yes.
Okay.
And you're, I, I think I anticipated your question when I was drafting this, you're absolutely correct.
We did talk at one point during the, the last hearing about having the residents identify their cars one way or another through a stickering process or something.
Yeah.
Would that still be something that's doable?
Yes.
Because I just want to make sure that they are not on Riverview Place.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That, I suspect Mr. Barone will implement that anyway. I mean, you only have, you have forty spaces, but it's only forty spaces, and it's going to be very particular about who gets to park where and the government permit system, as I said to the chairman before, reinforced by the lease provision.
Mm-hmm.
If you're renting X unit, your space is here, you only get one, there's only, you cannot have more than, you know, two visitors on-site at a time, you know, that would be a very...
I don't want that, too.
I'm sorry?
The resident should want that.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, no, no. It's, in this, this kind of floor plan and scenario, you would do exactly that to make sure your residents are accommodated.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Mr. Rosati, do you have anything you would like to add?
Just one thing very quickly, just to remind you, it's an existing building, so if we, if we reduce the number of units anymore, we're going to have dead space that, Melinda's going to tax us on. It's not really an option, because it's an existing building.
Okay. Seeing no more questions? Anybody who'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody, anybody who'd like to speak in favor? Anybody would like to speak in opposition that would like to add new testimony to this petition?
My name is Michael Giuliano. My wife and I have been unit owners at Village Square since April 2013. I'm here tonight to speak against this proposal for several reasons that jeopardize the quality of life, health, and safety of area residents, businesses, and motorists along Ferry Boulevard. Six oh eight Ferry Boulevard Associates is proposing twenty-one-bedroom apartment units and two offices of one thousand one hundred and twenty-five and one thousand two hundred and forty-six square feet on two-thirds of an acre, equaling, equaling, excuse me, twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight square feet. Next door is Village Square at Stratford Condominium Complex, which has sixty-eight units on six point six acres, equaling two hundred and eighty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty-four square feet. By comparison, six oh eight Ferry Boulevard will provide one thousand one hundred and sixty-four square feet of land on average per unit, while Village Square has four thousand two hundred and two square feet of land per unit. As you can see, six oh eight Ferry Boulevard, if built, would create an intensity of use more than three point five times that of Village Square. This intensity of use would most likely result in six oh eight Ferry Boulevard residents using Village Square pool, dock, and other amenities. After all, this is already a reality and major liability we deal with constantly in the face of trespassers who do not care to respect private property. Second, six oh eight Ferry Boulevard would offer forty parking spaces for twenty one-bedroom apartments and those two office suites. That means there will be at least twenty cars for the apartments alone, but could be as many as thirty or more with double occupancy. When you add in parking for the two offices, which may have several employees each, you're talking perhaps another fifteen or more cars. As you can see, the parking lot would be constantly at full capacity at best, but more likely at overcapacity, given the most likely scenario. This creates the likelihood of six oh eight Ferry Boulevard residents, office workers, and customers constantly parking at Village Square. More importantly, this scenario does not include room needed for apartment guests, customers, and supportive services coming in and out, as well as garbage removal, property maintenance, and most importantly, emergency services. Lastly, this extreme intensity of use would cause a major traffic hazard on this stretch of Ferry Boulevard, which is already very busy with traffic from Village Square and area businesses, namely Polly's Dance Studio, which already has people guiding traffic and parents parking on Ferry Boulevard. On top of all of this, there are plans for an exit thirty-three right in front of Village Square, which will only intensify an already dangerous traffic situation. In closing, I strongly recommend that this proposal be modified for many less units, say ten apartments and one office, if not completely disapproved by your board and other town boards. I leave you with this, given all I have said. How would you feel about this proposal if you lived at Village Square? Thank you.
Just for the record, I do. Anybody else would like to speak in opposition?
My name is Linda Kell, sixty-seven Ferry Court. Last time I didn't use the mic, sorry. Excuse me, Linda Kell, K E L L, sixty-seven Ferry Court. There's a lot of traffic going on, construction is starting, it seems, on Ferry Boulevard. They actually had our entrance blocked off the other day, I couldn't even get in there. So I don't know what they're doing out there, there's no communication. But I understand if it goes through, from what I saw on the website, in the spring of this year, they're going to start the on-off exits over there, which is going to be a nightmare for a couple of years. So on top of that, if this gets approved, it's, it's going to be a very bad situation out there. We have so much traffic out there on Ferry Boulevard. And I don't know the traffic person when he did his study, but when he did his study, did he include the two hundred and fifty apartments that are going up over, I believe it's two fifty, that are going up over there, and whatever, and then whatever else is going up. So there's a lot more traffic on I-95, and when there's an accident up there, it's gridlock on Ferry Boulevard. So with all the construction going on for the next two years, and now if this gets approved with that construction, we're going to have some safety issues. You know, then you have the school buses stopping over there to let the kids out to go, what's it, Riverview? Riverview, okay. So I just think, before this gets approved, we really need to think about it. You know, I was watching you on TV for your last meeting when you approved changing the texts, and one of, one of yous made a statement about, you know, it's kind of like putting on a pair of pants that's one size too small, you know, you can cram it in there, but in the end, there's going to be some pain. And I totally agree with that. And do we really want to have this kind of a situation? Nobody talked tonight about snow plowing. I think that needs to be addressed again. You know, if we have storms, bad snowstorm, what are we going to do with the snow plowing? So I, I just think, and again, I think going twenty units with commercial businesses in there, I agree with what Mike says, you know, that's really something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak opposed?
Good evening, my name is Bonnie Lambert, I live at forty-six Ferry Court. I had submitted a petition on behalf of a number of residents of Village Square, and I just would like to reiterate that our concerns are the same, and this new thing has done nothing to, you know, change our position and our objections. I mean, you know, it's, it's a candy mint, it's a breath mint, it's parquet, it's butter, it's the same thing. The concerns are the same, and our objections are still the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak in opposition? Anyone else in opposition? Seeing none, entertain a motion up. Hold on.
I'm Gary Walker, one thirty-five Riverview Place. And the way that this came through again is, by adding the commercial, you might as well have two more spots, so instead of having twenty, you're going to have twenty-two apartments, wouldn't that, it adds up the same. And also, I'd just like to say that from the first meeting that we had regarding this piece of property, that I think thirty people came to speak, and there would have been actually even more people that came to speak, had the meeting not run over so late, because Barry Knott had a, was giving a lecture here. And I think that that has to say something to you guys and ladies as to, you know, how the, how the neighborhood feels about this place, and I, we just wish it would still be an office building, and that with people, nine-to-fivers, and not an apartment building. Would they, the people that live there are going to have nowhere to go. They're going to be walking down Riverview Place, going down to look at the water, and that usually ends up with a bunch of people sitting at the end of the street, you know, having a few beers and then leaving their trash there for myself and my neighbors to pick up. So it's, it's, it's just not a good idea, and I hope that you'll see it as not being a good idea, and shrink it down to as much as you can shrink it down, or just not approve all of those, the zoning changes, which I don't think it warrants zoning changes for something like this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition?
Hi, I'm Dan Williams, I live at one sixteen Ferry Court. I just want to say that we all bought our condos knowing that there was a commercial building out front. We did not buy it knowing that there was going to be an affordable housing unit out front. If somebody bought the building to develop it, they should have to develop it as a commercial building. It's not fair to the residents that now this building is going to be turned into low-income housing. I don't think a lot of people realize, you drive by on Ferry, Ferry Boulevard, it looks like we just have condos out front. We have a lot of condos on the water, and this is going to be detriment to our property values.
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition? Anyone else in opposition? Seeing none, entertain a motion to close. Oh, you guys got anything to say? And Mr. Rosati, nothing? Mr. Hallis? Okay, with that, motion to close by Mr. Solhavy, the second by Mr. Vacola. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay, we're going to take a three-minute break, and then we will be back in session.
Thank you for a short meeting. This is three hearings this week.
I was at Westport last night, I'm going to hear you tomorrow. And last night was a tough night.
Only worse. Almost nothing.
You know, it was a sad evening.
Sounds that was a day where it was patron of New Orleans.
Well, they all spoke some things.
Oh, that was...
Yeah.
Yeah, true.
I want to...
I don't need to rush out.
All right. All right, guys.
All right.
My one. Then you have to be like. Just like a. We're. We look at art. Western. This part of the state. Eight dollars. And it keeps running. I think we're all. So just a little bit of this is hard. Dave, Dave, you're on. Talk about it. I don't like. We have cancer. So I was. Yeah. I checked. I have. Thank you. Just. I want to. I want. It's just like so much. It's what I. I think so. It wasn't. Now, so I don't. Enter. I think. It's better. Truth. Guys, my. Went down. Kids. That's. So. So. When it's. I. I didn't. What? This is. That's. I was out. I was. Sure. And now. Our property assessment. That's. We. That's. Getting. A lot. Of course. The first time. Truck. And. Team. That's only five. Very. First. Ooh. Listen. Radiance. Actually. That's. I'm. I'm. Right. So. What's the relation? When you're finally connected down. To me. This is. Too. Did you hear? Everybody? Building. Is. Cause. Women. Booty. It's. And. I. No. There are actually. Three. Like. That's. They. Yes. I mean, everybody thinks. That's. But. It's. Great. Being on the bridge. Really. Especially when you see. The. Freaked out. Back. That. Whatever. Global. It's like. Park. First. They love. It's not. It's. So he wants. And his brother as well. Things. But even to talk. My wife's. Been. About a year ago. She just. She put up. She took. Fields in a. Not that specific. Yeah. Was like a. I'm saying. No. So. She said. You are. Just. He told you. For. This is. When they say. How. It's. So. So. It's. It's. She. I sense. It's. She. Yeah. I. That's. She. I. 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 I don't know. I'm like. He's got. Now they. Uh. He's. Back. It's. Here's. Somewhere. He's. You gotta. Long. Like. You get. Long. He's like. As. He's. That. He's. Should. Like. Put yourself. We. Or. I think. I think. I'm just going. But. I can't. It isn't. It's. It's. That. It's. That's. I guess. I. I'd say. I'd say. It's. Maybe. Gag. No. It's. That. It's. I hear that. Exit. He said. Hey. This guy. This guy. I have. I. We. Just. I. I. We. Yes. I. You. How? How? You. Have. And. First. Well. You said.
All right, call this special meeting on our work agenda back to order at eight-oh-seven. Anybody care to do anything with anything here? Or we can sit here and look at each other. Mr. Hendrick, turn your mic on, please. Mic.
I know, you gotta. Your button. Well, it's just a little funky, I think, but that time his button was on. So, motion to take the text amendment revised petition.
For. Associate. C. The six-oh-eight Ferry Boulevard revised petition of six-oh-eight Ferry Boulevard. Associate. Change. And six-oh-eight Ferry Boulevard. Associates. Site. Review. Subsection. Twenty-nine. Second.
I don't know if the mic picked that all that up, but motion to take all three off the table and a second by Mr. Solhavy. All of them in favor, say aye. Opposed? So moved. What's our pleasure with these?
So I guess I'll speak for myself. Can't speak for everybody anyway, but. And I'll ask Mr. Urbanski in a moment how he feels about the text amendment and the zone change. But as far as the petition itself, I think we've made a number of requests of the applicant. And I think they've done a good job of meeting all those requests and trying to minimize and mitigate some of the traffic and parking concerns. My big concern is if we did say no to this, or if we do say no to this, my belief that they would come back with an eight-thirty-G affordable housing application, and the density would be much more extreme and much more intense. So I think they've tried to work with us to minimize the impact in the neighborhood and work with the existing spaces and create additional parking. So in my mind, this is a good use for the space. It is an existing building. It is there. You know, it was, if it wasn't there, we'd be, I think, maybe looking at it differently. But because it is an existing building, we're kinda, you know, it's something that we have to deal with. So to me, this is a good app. It's not necessarily a good application. They've done a good job to make the most of a situation that is there and exists. So as far as that goes, I think I'd be okay. But I'd like to ask Mr. Urbanski what he feels about the zone change and if it is actually gonna help us to enforce whatever regulations or rules that might be here with the town.
Sure. Well, in my staff comments, you know, I cite, you know, spot zoning. Although by statute, it doesn't really apply to an eight-thirty-G application, it's still something that I, you know, like to include in my staff comments. But in terms of, you know, whether or not we want to, I'm sorry, whether or not the board would like to approve the text amendment and the zone change just from a detail standpoint, you know, I referenced all the changes in the plans and made sure that they aligned with the revised text amendment as well as the zone change, and everything lines up. So, and I think the applicant's representative made a fair point that when you do approve an affordable housing project that utilizes eight-dash-thirty-G, it does create a baseline for enforcement. So we can understand that, okay, you know, twenty units were approved or however many in X amount of square footage of office space, and then we get a complaint that says, you know, thirty-five-hundred, thirty, someone comes in for a building permit and they wanna do something larger. We can at least go back to the text amendment and say, no, the regulations that governs this site says you're allowed X because they're not taking advantage, or they're not applying this site directly to the zoning regulation. So it does essentially give us, give the zoning enforcement officer some bite in any potential enforcement action. You know, it's hypothetical, but, and I think it also would make a difference in terms of financing for the applicant. Not that that's a huge concern necessarily for me, but I would imagine that it would be difficult to finance if, you know, one of those components was not part of the approval. So if the commission was interested in seeing the project actually approved and built, I think that would be an important part to it.
And you feel that the, that the zone change and the text change as submitted are in line with the application that was submitted as well?
Yes. I do.
Okay, anyone else? Ms. Phillips?
I'm going to dovetail off of what Mr. Hendrick said, that the applicant has gone to considerable lengths to incorporate our concerns. One of the things that I was more pleased with is that there was some commercial included in it. We've been asking for mixed use for some time off of the properties on Ferry Boulevard, and we've heard excuses one after another why there can't be any commercial space or it wouldn't work. So I'm pleased that this applicant has taken the leap of faith to try to at least accommodate that. Now, that being said, there's always two sides to that, that A, I know the concern that there could be too much parking. Twenty-five-hundred square feet is not very much in the scheme of commercial spacing nowadays. But I do like in the text amendment and in the plan that it still restricts the number of units to twenty, which means that I wanna make sure the applicant is okay with that, that if that doesn't go, then he comes back or something, and we have to look at some other. But I have more faith that I believe in this town and I believe in the area that, you know, a lawyer's office or small deli or something that would complement Ferry Boulevard would be possible. The second thing I do appreciate, and I know that affordable housing is one of those buzzwords that has a lot of emotion around it, and I'm sensitive to the neighborhood. But one of the things that we are struggling in this town is that we have a crisis almost, a real dearth of housing for our seniors. And we really need senior housing and a housing that they can afford. And it has been an opportunity. I see this as an opportunity, not that this is gonna be, as somebody mentioned, low-income housing, because this doesn't fit the low-income housing model. This is not public housing. But this is affordable housing that could meet the needs of seniors. And I understand by law, you can't make it senior housing. You can't discriminate. But it does provide that opportunity, and it helps to that. As far as the text amendment, until we do something about affordable housing in this town, changing the laws, doing a plan, we are going to be littered with these types of text amendments while developers are looking to seek additional units. Either we add more units or we do something about the laws. I do think that this text amendment is probably as tight as it could possibly be, no more than twenty. It can't be used anywhere else. It's very, very tight. I'm inclined to feel positive, and I'll listen to the rest of the commissioners, but those are my thoughts. And as you can tell from my questions, the safety of this, because I'm envisioning seniors as part of this. So that was it.
Mr. Solhavy?
Okay. Okay, I thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, I commend the applicant for being attentive to a lot of the concerns and making these revisions. I agree with a lot of the statements that have been made by other commissioners here, and I think one of the issues that concerns me greatly and has from the beginning is just how 8-30G works. I've... In the years I've been involved on planning and zoning, I've spoken numerous times about my disagreements about the way the law does things, and I've also spoken that one of my biggest concerns is that it's a self-defeating law. The more units of affordable housing you add, the further behind you go. Because if this were, let's just say hypothetically, this were 20 units of affordable housing, your net gain of affordable housing is 20. But just in this one, now you're actually losing, because you're adding housing stock that is not considered by this questionable formula of affordable housing, your non-affordable stock in. So, the further you go, the further away you get. And it seems like it's a gift to developers. But I don't foresee the law changing. Our good friends in Hartford, I'm sure all of the bills and some of them come up there, and I'm sure they'll... None of them will ever see the light of day, so it is the law right now. And one of the issues with the law is that when you go to... Let's say the commission denies this straight out, as has been suggested. The very likely result is, we'll probably end up in court. And the courts, having been involved in this, they look at things such as health and safety issues, why that would override the need for affordable housing in the town. And I know in some of the remarks, some issues have been brought up. I'm, having been involved in a few cases where there were serious questions about whether fire trucks could come underneath Parkway overpasses, and the judge says, nah, they'll be fine. I'm not sure I'm seeing things that rise to the same level of that or exceed that. And I know they would probably come back with something that, well, okay, if this one particular plot of land is subject to health and safety concerns, how come that the... All of the units in Village Square would not be under the same... There, but yet you have a large community living there. So, it's a losing proposition for the town. And we get ourselves... Find ourselves placed in these very difficult situations about what do we do? A couple other things. I'm just looking at the building in the last few weeks, when I've had a little bit more time to drive around. The building's looking worse every time you look at it. And this is about the second or third application I've sat in on with a proposal to do something with it. It was residential once, I think that was rejected. I think it was commercial another time. It was a church for a little while. There were plans to remove the parking deck, to restore the parking deck. The building itself is crumbling around it, and you start wondering, okay, what's the issue here? It seems like nothing seems to be able to work for it. So, and I think a lot of people have expressed the desire that something be done to stop what is becoming, rapidly becoming, in my opinion, is rapidly becoming an eyesore on one of our busier streets, and it's because of the one-way traffic's not necessarily a gateway into Stratford, but by all means, there's a gateway, like one of the last impressions you see before you cross the bridge and head into Devon. So, that's a concern as well. I'm concerned about the commercial situation. I'm not sure how that's gonna work, and I'm a little less confident maybe than Commissioner Phillips that that's going to take. It's sort of in an awkward situation. Maybe an attorney's office is something in there, maybe it's... I'm just having a hard time seeing a situation where this is gonna go. But by all means, I know it is something that we in our plan of conservation have developed, have encouraged, mixed use. So, by all means, you know, it's a possibility that this could actually work. But I'm also mindful of the fact that we could be back here at another point saying, okay, we need to amend this to... Because it's just not working and not feasible. And while it probably might be nice to say, okay, well, we can repurpose that for something else to the benefit of the residents, the odds are, we're probably gonna come back and looking to say, if you add up the spots on the square footage in there, you're probably looking at, you know, bring additional units in there. So, I'm not sure how that's all gonna play out if this is passed. The... Yes, the one size too big, although I have to give credit that another member of the town council once mentioned, made that remark in front of the planning commission when I was a chairman, and it sort of stuck with me as a good description. Because there are still concerns that we have regarding Riverview Place and Ferry Boulevard itself. And it's gonna be incumbent upon, if this passes, everyone to make sure that this is gonna be a highly restricted parking area, you know? It's gonna have to be made highly impressed upon the residents that, no, you're not allowed to park on Riverview Place. You have a spot, and that's gonna be the place where you're gonna go. And if you cannot live within that, if you have your personal collection of four cars and you want all four of them on the property at a given time, no, that's not gonna work. Because... And those situations will come to light, especially as was mentioned, if we have a snowstorm, if we have some sort of a situation. Polly's Gymnastics, apparently, and I know they've been around for some time, but I would probably encourage, if this is passed, that there has to be, I think, a conversation here. And a friendly conversation, but a conversation nonetheless, that, you know, their clients would not be allowed to park on, in this apartment building. And I say that as a condo owner myself, because there's a piece of our... In the place where I live, a piece of our road is public road, so anybody can park there. And when we have games over at Flood, a lot of people do. But then it's always those one, two days a year when they have the parents' orientation over at Chapel and Flood, and there's cars all over the place. But thankfully, we've had our conversations with P&amp;Z years ago and with the police, and I think there's now an understanding about what's allowable and what isn't. So, these types of situation, it does require some degree of dialogue between town officials, residents, and the management companies there to make... To get in front of these types of things and to make sure that they are handled properly when it does happen. So, there probably is a conversation that's gonna have to happen should this go through. As far as the regulation, I think it's pretty tight, as we've said. I understand the whole issue about how it is for spot zoning and, you know... So, it might be worthwhile to restrict that. The last thing that is... I wanna talk about is the compromise. And one of... And I know, speaking for myself, the last time this was before it, I was concerned very much so that there... I didn't think that there had been an adequate ability, adequate movement on the part of the applicant to compromise and with the number of units. Now, we've gone from 24 to essentially 20 plus 2 because of the two commercial units. We had approved 16 plus 0, because we didn't have the commercial units in ours. So, there has been some movement. I'm probably of the mind that the ideal is 18 plus 2, just preparing ourselves for the eventuality that this experiment might not work, and then eventually, we're back at 20 total. So, those are just my thoughts on this one. We'll have to keep talking about this, and I hope the residents and the applicants appreciate that this is... There's some very difficult issues here. And it seems like whenever we're debating 8-30G, there's always difficult issues, because you're in a piece of land in a very, very tight area, very dense populations existing because of the... Just the nature of the houses and the condos in the area. And we're trying to find the right balance for all of these competing factors in here, and doing our best in our legislative capacity and judicial capacities to make that work. So, there's a lot to consider here. I hope I've given some of the members some things to think about, and that's what... From what I'm seeing from my perspective here. So, not an easy decision. So, let's keep talking.
Thank you, Mr. Silhavy. I guess I'll throw in a few words here. As far as the text amendment and the, you know, hopefully the... What they're trying to change and the use of the zone change, I'm still looking at it as spot zoning. I can't get my hands around looking at it anything differently. I think because it affects me more than anybody else in this room, I walk out my front door, this is all I see. And I can see parking being a big issue, safety having some concerns there with the amount of cars that are there. Yes, the applicant has made quite a few changes and has worked with us well. I still can't get past the number 16 plus the two commercial spots. Snow is also... Snow removal is a concern, everything that has been brought up to us within the last seven months now. I've weighed everything. But again, every time I walk out my front door, I look at that building, and I would like to see something there, a lot more, you know, appealing to the eye. And I think, you know, I feel for the applicant, and it's just sitting there, and all he's doing is just dishing out tax dollars. I believe that he would really like to see some return on that, and I feel for that. But I think a compromise somewhere in there, you know, it's up to everybody else that has to wrestle with that in their own mind, whether, you know... But I just can't get off the number 16 to myself, so anything more than 16, I will not be supporting. So, wherever we go from there. Mr. Hendrick?
Just to kinda wrap up my thoughts and comments, too. In my mind, one of the things that they have done is they have met all our criteria. One of my big concerns from the start was the parking there. And I think, you know, whether they... Whether people believe they compromised or not, I do believe that they had. They've met our parking regulations. I think they're above that. They've shown a desire to be good neighbors. They've listened to our comments about, you know, parking deliveries, making the space more easily accessible, moving the dumpsters, addressing the snow removal to some extent, and just creating a more desirable, more aesthetically pleasing building. I think they've done all those things as we've asked. The applicant, Biagio, I don't remember your last name, but Biagio has a great restaurant over there. He's a business owner. Again, he has shown a desire, I believe, to be a good neighbor. He runs a great business, a great restaurant. But by the compromises he's made, it shows... I believe it shows that they are listening, they're addressing the concerns. There is a point of no return. If they go below that point, I understand it makes it not economically feasible to develop or do anything with the property. There's a bottom line. But they've tried to, I think, come to the middle with us and do that while being concerned of the neighbors. So, I think because he's shown he's a good... Gonna be a good neighbor, I think because he's done that now, I think he will continue to do that. He's talked about the security concerns and ensuring that the cameras would be top quality, the lighting would be top quality, going with the stickers for the neighbors, trying to address all those issues. I think he's gone, to a good extent, to show that he will be a good neighbor and will not just come in, blast up these buildings, collect the rent, and say, screw you, to the neighbors. I think he will be a... He's a guy who's had a business in town for a long time. He's stayed in business because he listens to the concerns of his customers, and he continues to put out a good product. And I think he will do that with this as well. So, I like what he's done and, you know, yeah. I wish the building was in the middle of a big vacant lot with nobody around, and we had all the room in the world. But that's not Stratford either. Stratford isn't a town where we have tons and tons of land like Shelton, where we can put up anything we want, wherever we want. We have to work with what we have and in the same time, be good, caring neighbors and be a community. And I think he's shown that, so.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to add?
I'm agreeing with Mr. Silhavy on this about that. I know you guys came and we worked out, you know, you met us halfway. But I'm in with Mr. Silhavy about why not go in 18 plus the 2, which would give you the 20. That's my concern. Okay? That's, you know, like I said, and the parking, that is gonna be an issue there, because like if they have a doctor's office or, you know, I'm saying that there's six people working in the doctor's office or whatever, and you have patients there, what's to say they're not gonna park on the street? Okay? You can't guarantee that. So, that's my concern. I'd like to see if they could do that, is go 18 plus the 2 would be the equal to 20.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything to say or wanna make a motion, or... No, not yet?
I was just gonna wrap up my thoughts after listening to everyone. I'm probably more in line with Mr. Hendrick's. I think all the conditions that we have set forth, they have met and have really extended themselves. I mean, one of the challenges of being on this board is we ask developers for these criterias, and then we... When they meet them, we change the goalpost. We've asked for mixed use, we've asked for greater safety, we've asked for a number of things and stipulations, and they have come back with a plan that meets those needs and that conforms to the plan of conservation. The other thing that Mr. Hendrick started to talk about, which I agree with, is the character of the developer. You know, we struggle with folks that come in from out of somewhere, and they don't care about our neighborhood. I believe Mr... You know, actually, I don't remember your last name. Biagio. I don't know. What else? Abroni? Yeah. He lives in town. He's a resident. He's a taxpayer. And he's been responsible in his business. And I'd like to see more developers like him rather than these developers that build big complexes and then go away someplace. If we don't pass this, I'm concerned that, yes, we may end up with something worse as it goes to court, and we've seen that happen on several occasions. Number two, we drive away good developers that only despise us and our town suffers. I listen to the neighbors. I care very much about the neighborhood, and I don't wanna see that building become something even worse than what it is. It's the lesser of... It's a difficult decision. It's the lesser of two weaver. But it is probably one of the better plans that I have seen. 18 versus 20, I think 20's fine. I mean, if we make it so untenable that a developer says, look, I'll just take it to court, I just don't see the benefit of splitting our town. It's still taxpayer dollars. It's still a good resident. There's... It's still a business owner who is going to keep the property and be responsible for it and be accessible. I'm fine with the 20.
Thank you. Anybody care to take a stab at anything else?
One question, and I do wish we had our council here. Just a procedural question to go through this. We have three items, the text amendment, the petition, and the site plan review. And I know last time, we did not approve the first two, but then did the third. Is that still the precedent we should be following, or how is... What's the proper procedure for something like this where there's in three parts?
To vote on each one independently.
Is there a specific order?
I would just take them in the order that they were... You know, I think the proper chronological order would be the text amendment, the zone change, and then the site plan review in that order.
Okay, very well. Then I move a... Okay, very well, then I move adoption of the text amendment.
I have a motion by Mr. Salhavy. Do we have, second by Ms. Phillips, under discussion?
Under discussion, I move to amend the regulation as presented, under section twenty-nine point six density, I move to change the number twenty to the number eighteen, as in eighteen residential units. And ask for a vote on the amendment.
What was the section again?
Twenty-nine point six.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Salhavy to change, to change the amendment, or change the text amendment. To amend the amendment. And do I have a second on that by Mr. Vacola? You want a roll call vote, or do you want, uh, just the voice, regular, regular? All those in favor of that, say aye. Opposed? Nay. I am opposed to the change, or, yes? Okay, so... Yeah, we got it there. Ms. Phillips and myself vote no, and the other three, they don't even need the three votes, right? So, it passes three to two. Item number two, if, uh, nope? Oh, no.
Just the amendment as amended is on the floor. And if there's any other members that have, um, any revisions or anything else they want to make to that, that would be in order at this point.
Any further changes, amendments? Seeing none? I think, Mr. Habianski?
I would just recommend that it's approved as revised, uh, December third, two thousand and eighteen, so we know we're voting on the, the revised application.
Okay, so noted. And, so it's all in a motion, Mr. Vacola made a second. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? I say no. Passes four to one. Okay, with item number two, anybody like to, uh... You're on the roll tonight, Chris.
Okay, move adoption of six oh eight Ferry Boulevard, revise petition of six oh eight Ferry Boulevard Associates. Move adoption.
Motion by Mr. Salhavy, do I have a second? By Mr. Vacola?
Just my question is, in, in light of the fact that it's been changed, the amendment's been changed, how do we have to react in order to accommodate that? Or do we not?
Uh, for the, the zone change, there would be no, there would be no modification to that.
Okay.
Based on, you're, you're saying based on the re, the density reduction from twenty to eighteen?
Mm-hmm. Okay, so then that just falls on, it's probably the last one that we might have to make some adjustments to.
My only recommendation would be as revised December third, for all these.
For all three, okay. So then, no change on that, so move adoption.
Motion by Mr. Salhavy, do I have a second? Mr. Vacola, I believe. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? I say no. Four to one. Anybody feeling lucky with number three?
Mister, okay. Move adoption of the site plan approved under section twenty-nine, the December third version, as amended on January the ninth.
Motion by Mr. Salhavy, do I have a second? Mr. Vacola? Any discussion on this, uh, item? Mr. Hendrick?
Just like to ask Mr. Manzi, by, by doing it this way, changing, because it says to a twenty-four unit on, on our agenda, by cha, by wording it the way that Mr. Salhavy did that, that puts us in line with, with what we're doing?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. And just to be clear, it was from twenty to eighteen, eighteen is the number now.
Yeah, eighteen is the residential piece plus the two commercial. Now, the, the only question I have is that if we're approving a site plan, we don't have a site plan in front of us that shows the new configuration of that. Would it be appropriate for us to be voting on this at this point?
It, it would be. I think what you would do is, you would just amend it as a condition of approval, which we do all the time. You know, if they come in with, with one number, you can approve it with a condition that it be reduced, the den, the number of units be a maximum of eighteen, plus two office units not to exceed twenty-five hundred square feet, as, as it reads in the, in the text amendment.
Okay, as lo, as long as it's, I mean, they're going to have to be reviewed by, by you to make sure that, I mean, this is sort of unusual where we're, the way we're doing this, where it's, approving it, that's not in conformance with the regulation, and it's not in front of us, so we can entrust you, your office, to make sure that, uh, final, uh, plan, site plan is submitted and meets your approval?
Absolutely.
Okay. There we go. So...
Motion.
So, move it, the site pla, uh, move adoption of it, subject to the approval of the Planning and Zoning Administrator to ensure conformance with the newly revised regulation and the, with the regulation that was adopted and amended this evening.
December third, amended Jan, January ninth.
Motion by Mr. Salhavy, do I have a second on that? Mr. Vacola, any further discussion on the matter? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Nay. Four to one, pass. Approval of the minutes.
Yeah, we got the CAM site review as well. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hendrick?
Motion to approve, um, the minutes of the November fourteen, two thousand and nineteen meeting.
Motion by Mr. Salhavy, second by Mr. Vacola, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes five zero. Mr. Hendrick? CAM site plan review?
Motion to approve the, uh, CAM site review, uh, of, of six oh eight Ferry Boulevard to be in accordance with, uh, the approved site plan, um, that was approved this evening.
And that should read eighteen units? Eighteen plus two commercial units? All, uh, second by Mr. Salhavy, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? So moved, five zero. Zoning enforcement study, accessory apartment applications, sediment and erosion control, it's not required, right? Planning projects, other items, next page. Goal settings, blah, 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 blah. Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn? Motion by Ms. Phillips, second by Mr. Vacola, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed?